Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The regular meeting with the County Township Planning Commission will come to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sure everybody by now has noticed that our planner, Mr. Borden, is not here this evening. He is somewhere between Florida and Michigan. His plane flight last, yesterday, was canceled, and I think all of us who travel know exactly all about that. So he has communicated with me a little bit in order to kind of help fill in for his big absence. But you all have to make the commitment not to ask too many hard questions, because I probably won't be able to answer them. But somehow, I think we'll get through. Does anybody have any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
A motion from?
Brian.
Brian?
Support.
Eric? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The agenda stands. First item is the, are the minutes from March 6th? Does anybody have any comments or thoughts about these minutes? They look all right? Entertainer motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
Eric? Motion from Eric, support from Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Lori, please thank Brittany for us.
I will.
You gals do a great job for us, and we appreciate it. Okay, now, next item is public comment. Anybody wishing to speak with the commission about any item not on the agenda? Any hands? Nope, no hands, so we'll move on. First application is a special land use dog daycare facility. I'll do a little review here and kind of get it started. The applicant is Freshwater Technologies LLC, 8441 Macomb, PO Box 742. The owners are Paul and Susan Dalpar at 10384 Butcher Road and Grossoio. The facility that's being evaluated today is entitled Island Paradise. The location, legal description is Grossoio Supervisors, Platte Number 28. The common description is 9155 Grow Road, and this is in the airport district. It's located about 200 feet south of Grow Road and about 300 feet west of the township maintenance building. So it's back inside the airport area proper. The proposal is to convert an existing vacant building into a dog daycare slash boarding facility. There is no new building construction as part of this project. The building is there, and it's simple modifications inside and out to make it compatible with the potential use. The zoning is A1 Airport Light, Airport and Light Industrial District. The relevant ordinances that we're considering tonight are Article 9, again, the Airport and Light Industrial District, Article 22, Special Land Use, and Article 21, Site Plan Review. Under the Article 9, Section 3.6, kennels are considered a special land use. So our review process tonight is going to be to look first at the special land use review and make a recommendation for the township board. Second, we will talk about the site plan specific and vote on that. And then finally, that package would be sent forward to the township board for their special land use final approval. So tonight, we're going to handle both the special land use and the site plan. And I expect that the planning commission will be voting on both of these measures tonight. We're going to take this kind of in the following fashion. We're going to hear from the applicant, who I think has a presentation for us, that we're going to hear from. And then we'll come back and we'll review the special land use and site plan components from Brian's letter that he gave us. Then we'll open the public hearing for the special land use, take public comment, close the public hearing, then have discussion then on the site plan and the special land use, and correspondingly vote. Is the process clear to everybody? How we're going to move ahead on this?
Yes.
Okay. Then, on that note, I'd like to welcome the applicant. Come on up and introduce yourself and tell us about your project.
Hello, I'm Paul Delpiaz. This is Susan Delpiaz. As you noted, we live on 10384 Boucher Island Residence for about 20 years. I'm going to talk a little bit while she's getting things organized. We came about looking into providing a dog daycare and boarding facility at a cost in the fact that we could never find one. You know, we could never find a good, convenient place to take our dogs. And so this is where we started looking. Been working with John and the Commerce Park Commission to locate a building. We've looked at several buildings in that process, and we came upon the building. It's in the, I think in the Commerce Park, they call it Building 47, which is 9155 Grow.
Could you maybe pull the microphone up just a little bit there? I want to make sure everybody can, in the television audience, can hear you.
Thank you. So with that, we're just going to run through the presentation, kind of go through that. If you'd like to ask questions during, that's fine. Or if you want to wait till the end, that's entirely up to you. So this is the existing current state of the building that's located inside Commerce Park or the airport property. Just kind of flip through some of these. If you'd like to stop on any of these, just let us know. This is the interior of the building. Doesn't look like this anymore. The folks at the airport have cleaned it up, and it's in much better condition since the last time we saw it. Inside of the building, office space, sorts of things. So this is probably where you want to stop a little bit and discuss some things. The building sits roughly 218 feet from the road. That's an important, that's an important item, because it needs to be 200 feet from a road. That is a zoning requirement. So we're 218 feet to the road, which allows us to get past any sort of zoning ordinance issues or zoning variance issues. Sue did a little extra work here and actually noticed that we're, how far? I don't have that in front.
It's 407 feet.
So the closest home is about 407 feet from the building, from the corner of that building.
To the doorstep.
Yep. So we're going to be fencing the south end of the building. So the south end is obviously, you know, away from the road, away from, away from the residential area that's on Grow Road. And we're going to be adding this covering, you know, to that, so you can, you know, keep the noise and any sort of, any sort of other issues that come up.
Also looks nice.
Yeah, it does look nice. Inside, we'll be doing these bafflings that will, you know, keep the sound down. If you looked at, if you remember the previous photo of the inside, it's opened up, and without this, you know, you'd have a lot of echoing going on. So we've got some sound baffling that we're going to be adding to the interiors. Interior fencing is going to be inside to allow for racking the dogs in certain ways and being able to guide them through as they come in.
It's portable.
And they're portable, too. The swineboard is this, this, it's really a plastic covering that'll go along the fencing inside to keep the dogs safe. It also, you know, keeps dogs separated so they don't see each other. It's just a nice feature that you have in. The floor matting is designed for pets. It's very similar to the matting that you see in gyms, but it's a little thicker, and it's non-permeable. So you can't, you know, nothing's going to get inside there. The outside, on the south side, we're going to be adding a turf. We have some examples of this, if you'd like to see it. It's an artificial turf that goes along the ground. Ground has to be leveled and drained properly. But then this, this actually has seep through for liquids, but solids actually don't make it through. One of the things a lot of people don't understand is that you cannot have, you cannot clean, properly clean a mess on dirt or regular grass, because you just can't get it all off, and you can't wash it. So this is designed for pets, specifically for kennels. So there's some information in the, in the presentation regarding sanitation. Yeah, it's basically nontoxic sanitation, multi-use stuff that allows us to clean the area and disinfect it. All biodegradable, you can kind of flip through that. All right, so this is the, what's this, the front of the building? Yep. So the front of the building, we're going to be adding some outside, you know, potted plants. And then that front is also going to be turned into parking, in a handicap parking on the end. So the south end of the building, you can see, has some double fencing, obviously some kiddie pools we're going to be adding, some shading. Trying to get something out there. And that exit to the building will be used as the ingress and egress for the, for the facility for the pets. And, oh yeah, and the parking in the back for employees. Yep. This is the back of the building with the parking. This is one of those plastic sheds you've seen, I think, in the past. This is also, it's not, this is one of the items Brian brought up, is that the curb refuge cans, they're going to be put back here. So that's where the, that's where these, those will be located. This is the north end of the building. It's going to be unused. Originally, we had planned to put the dogs on that side, but we realized that it was going to be facing the residential area, and it would have gotten us under that 200 feet limit. So we opted to move them to the other side. So the interior of the building is, you know, entry, we have a office space, some retail space, lobby entrance. There's going to be some large cages on the north side, and then on the west side, or the east side of, no, the west side of the building. No, it's the east side of the building, I'm sorry, is the play area. And there's multiple play areas. And then there is a pre-existing cement, or not cement, cinder block room in the back there. It's going to become the mudroom, where we call, we're calling it the mudroom. That's where the dogs will be ingressing, egressing from the play area from outside.
Double fencing.
Double fencing, yeah. This is, this is, yep. We added a photo of the sign that's there, and what else we got? And that's it?
No, we can do the...
Oh, yep, the rendering, yep.
So this is just what we went through, over. This is just a 3D rendering of it. You can see, this is, be the outdoor play area with the shading in for summertime. You have the double fencing on the outside to eliminate any escape of the dogs. As you walk in here, this is where you'll walk in, and this will be the reception area. This will be the staff area. All this is already there, and that's what we'll just be making that of that area. These will be all the large cage areas. We have an area for smaller cages. And then, as we explain, these are the, there'll be three different play areas, indoor play areas, which we separate the dogs from the little dogs. We'll go in the little area. And then you want to separate the dogs that are more rambunctious in one play area, and then the calmer dogs, the older dogs, in the third play area. So that's what that represents. And then this is the mudroom, as we explained before. And then this is just how the back looks. I told you to shut your phone off.
Any, any, any questions or concerns?
Let's, let's go around, see if there are any initial questions, and we'll review Brian's letter and go from there. Mr. Rathell, you and I participated with the applicant in a meeting at township a while back. Would you start our discussion?
Well, the only thing that I'm going to say, I've been very heavily involved with this for a long time, so there's not any questions that I need answers for that already haven't been asked. But I will say that Paul and Sue, in the 26 years I've been putting leases together at this airport and dealing with people, they have been the most professional and the most willing to accommodate everybody involved. And when we had to come and do a special land use presentation here, but leading up to it, it was always, how can we work with the township to make it better, because we're going to need the township supporters to make our business succeed with the residents and the quality of care that, you know, we all want our dogs to have. And I can say that we have a four-month-old puppy now. I don't know if you guys knew, like, we did get a puppy.
You're going to be our client, I know.
For sure. Yeah, for sure. I would take my dog and trust you with you, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Angela, your thoughts, please, initially.
I just had a little laugh at you getting a puppy, because I think everyone during COVID ended up with a puppy at some point in the last two years. So I think you'll be quite busy. You know, I think that you have a nice plan in place. It's great to see it in the rendering. When I took a look at the packet, I, you know, was excited at the idea and the concept, and I think how well it could do and would do here. But I also am super impressed by the way that you thought through it and thought about the neighbors, thought about how it would look, you know, from the street side and from the, from the neighbor side. So I thank you for putting all that thought into it. And yeah, I think it looks great.
I will also add that this building used to be a, from what I understand, the ammunition building. So it has really thick walls. So...
So it has really thick walls. So, um, if, you know, if there's a noise concern, that only adds to our benefit that it has super thick walls because of its prior use. So.
Yeah, I think that's key.
Thank you. Jay?
Uh, yep, I'll, I'll add my name to the COVID puppy list. And, and ours would be in the rambunctious, uh, area. Uh, and, uh, and I will, you know, like we, my wife takes our, our dog up to Port Huron too, because that's the place she found that she likes for boarding. So, uh, she's picky and, uh, this, this looks like a great alternative to an hour and a half drive. Um, that's not a high bar, but it's, it's for her it is. So, uh, this is great. Um, no, but I, I think the, uh, just a couple of questions that I had, um, to help kind of clarify some things. Uh, and I think you may have said it. Is, is that a grass area on the north side? Is that?
Yeah, it's grass right now.
That's already there.
Yeah, it's already there and it's grassed.
That, it just looks prettier. That fence is already there. That, that actually looks prettier than it is. And also some of those bushes. So that's already there. On the other side of that is that store, outdoor storage facility.
Yeah. So, uh, that was the, the other piece. So I, it, one of the things that's in our packet is a, uh, shows a traffic pattern. I'm assuming that is the traffic pattern to get to the Campo storage.
That's correct. Yep.
Area back there. Uh, and, um, if I'm, you know, I'm trying to put together the, the, what we're looking at on the screen with, with this and, and having driven back there, I, I, what I'm seeing, I think, is that your property would go basically to their driveway? That goes back there. Is that fair to say? Because there isn't really a.
Yeah, that, that, that curve, where they curve into their, their, uh, lot right there is, is where the end of the kennel will be. The run, the dog runs will be right there.
John, perhaps you would comment on that as to why they, why that's that way?
So currently the Campo traffic comes off of Grow in front of this building. However, there's an entrance which is farther west, um, to lead back. So to allow for safe parking, um, and access more, um, I guess, human traffic into this building, uh, we rerouted the Campo traffic to come farther, um, west and then back straight and then curve around into their lot. So, um, the fence that, um, they'll have will separate their lot from, uh, the, the traffic going to Campo. And make for a safe route for everybody, safe activity for the dogs, the people and give, um, clear access for Campo to get his, um, you know, dump truck or whatever, you know, he's, he's putting back there.
And then the, uh, so I don't know if anybody had any follow-up on that, but that helps me. Uh, there, uh, on this same drawing, I don't know if you have.
Yeah, can we put that up on the, uh, screen?
I don't think I have that one.
I can, I can put that one up there if you want.
There you go.
Put it up there so everybody can look.
He's new here.
I didn't want anyone to hear me.
There we go. Perfect.
Okay. So the, um, just to follow up on what John was saying there, the, the traffic for Campo would come in through these arrows, um, and not drive right past the front of your building. Is that, that's what I'm seeing there? Uh, and then I don't know if this is representative. Uh, it seems to show a larger, um, rear lot than I think what's on your drawings. Is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah, we did not, we did not build in any of the, the lot back there. Uh, we weren't planning on, we planned on using it, but not as part of the initial.
So you'd use it to come around to parking and that rear parking for staff, etc. Okay. That's all my questions. I, I, it's a really well put together proposal, I think.
Thank you, Jay. Dan?
Uh, just discussing a few items that, uh, surrounding residents would be concerned about. You know, one was noise. And I think it's great that your outdoor area is located on the south side of the building. Uh, I, I think the actual building will help shield a lot of that noise. And being, being that, uh, it's two hu, just over two hundred feet plus the width of the building, I think it's a pretty good distance away from, uh, Grow Road or especially the residential residence that are across the street. Um, having dogs, my, a couple of dogs myself and knowing how much waste they produce in the, in the backyard. I was wondering if, if you could elaborate a little bit and how you're handling the waste. I, I assume you're going to have twenty-plus dogs in this building out of time and they're going to produce a lot of waste and just wondering about, uh, because it'll be stored, I'm assuming it's going to be stored on the east side of the building and just wondering about how you're handling it to prevent odors building, uh, building up over time.
Um, I'm going to start some of this, but Sue's going to probably jump in, uh, for sure. Um, the, the process of waste, just to kind of clarify, waste has to be picked up immediately. There's no, you, you can't let the dogs, you know, have waste, you know, solid waste and, and let them, you know, get it in their paws. And so, so, so the importance of picking it up immediately is, is, uh, by far uh, the utmost thing, important thing you have to do. Um, so number one, it's got to get picked up immediately. Number, number two, um, after it gets picked up, it's, it's put into a bag and then sealed and then put into an indoor trash can. And then that's bagged and then put into the outdoor trash can. So you've got some double layer there of, 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 um, protection. Um, third thing is then it's disinfected immediately too. So after it's picked up, there's a spray. Um, it, it's mostly vinegar-based. Is, you know, it's an, you know, it's an acidic, um, spray, um, that disinfects the, the waste immediately. Um, and then from there, it, you know, during shift changes or twice, twice a shift, it will go out into the external trash can. So.
Okay. Will it be toders out or?
Yeah, we're going to use the, the, the smaller totes, you know, the, the, we'll probably have several of those, um, and, and use those, you know, covered lids, you know, the, with the wheels on. Yep.
Empty it on a week, weekly basis?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay, thank you. No problem.
Dan?
Right.
I have no further questions.
Eric?
No, this looks like a good proposal in an existing building and actually will make it look a lot better than it is right now. Would almost rather have the, uh, good-looking area facing Grow rather than in the back of it, but I understand the noise concerns.
Okay. Well, let's take a, a look now at, uh, at Brian Borden's write-up for the planning commission. And we'll summarize, summarize this briefly. He looked at both the special land use and the site plan standards. His conclusion for the special land use was that, uh, the, the standards as laid out in twenty-two point three are met. That implies a compatibility with the master plan, that this is in fact complimentary to the industrial uses that are there. And consistent with, uh, the development goals that the airport has. He concluded that was compatible with, with, uh, adjacent uses, uh, that, um, that, of the mix, of the mix that's there. Uh, traffic was not a factor after the safety issue was resolved that, uh, uh, John spoke to here briefly. Uh, no impact on, uh, on the overall environment. It is compatible with the, or compliant with the, the intent of the zoning district and public services are, uh, there's no adverse impact there. He was specific in a couple of other areas. Uh, first of all, that the building and the outdoor dog areas meet the dimensional requirements. It's placed away from, from Grow Road as it should be. Uh, there are definite measures to mitigate any potential nuisance from these dogs, whether it's from noise or getting, having them get out. You'll keep indoor, outdoor and, and keeping the areas clean. And as you heard tonight, the applicant described how we, how we will keep the area clean. Uh, now there was a request, um, that was on his list. Uh, I'll read it here. We request the applicant acknowledging it firm compliance with the requirements that dogs are to be kept indoors between six PM, or ten PM and six AM. Is that correct?
Yep.
That is correct. Yes. And it's not a problem. Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and we request that the applicant confirm that there are no county or state regulations applicable to this use. Or if there are any, that you're in compliance. Is there anything that, that's outside our zoning that we don't know?
I already spoke with, uh, our animal control officer, uh, that, that her inspection, she does the actual inspection. So she's on board with what we have to do to be compliant with the state and we work for, we're MDA, which is Michigan Department of Agriculture, which just falls under. Um, and then she, she actually has all the authority to do the inspection and anything she has to do. So that's all handled locally.
Okay. So you, you have validated this with, uh,
Yep.
our, our animal control officer Julie Cordis and, and you're square.
Yep.
Okay. Well, uh, we'll talk a little bit about the site plan. Um, there were some things here that, that were written as well. Um, first, uh, if required by the building department, the applicant must install the railing or protective system on that, on that front ledge that you showed on the front of the building. Maybe you could, uh, prop that up again. That was a truck well at one point and there's a, like a four-foot or five-foot drop-off.
While she's doing that, um, we're working with Commerce Park and, and the building department to, uh, make sure that we, we, not just that specific, uh, requirement, but, um, yep, but any other, yeah. Any other safety and or zoning, not zoning, but.
Alright, so you're, you guys are on that with the township. That's, that's the, uh, loading dock area there. So, uh, that will be made safe per the township, uh, standards.
Yep. Whenever, you know, I guess whatever the building, uh, department needs us to do there to make sure that that gets, you know, uh, it, obviously as safe as, as possible because we're going to have dogs and, and clients up there. So.
Absolutely. Uh, and you've already talked about the, uh, the method of refuse control and disposal. So that, that item that he listed was taken care of. Uh, do you have any external lighting that you're going to have? And if so.
So there's a, yeah, there's a lot of lighting already on the building. A lot of it is spot lit. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna probably replace a lot of it. Um, there we go. Um, we're going to be replacing, uh, a lot of it with lighting like this and, and it's also going to be motion sensor. So, you know, we're not going to have this thing illuminated and being a big eyesore, um, you know, on twenty-four hours, that's that sort of thing. So, so we're going to see, uh, downlighting similar to this, um, pretty industrial looking, but, and, and heavy duty, uh, on the external of the building.
Alright. Uh, the last item was, um, you know, before you install your sign, you have to get a permit. That's just general information.
Yep, yep. We understand.
So those were the key elements, uh, in the special land use and site plan review that, uh, that Brian did. Does anybody have any specific questions on those? Okay, hearing, uh, no questions, then I'm going to formally open the public hearing for the special land use. Does anybody care to comment on this application in the audience? If so, raise your hand. Please, come on up, sir. Uh, yeah, come on up, give us your name and your address and speak into the microphone, please.
Hey, yeah, I'm, I'm Leonard Kaminsky. I live in nine zero one zero Grow Road. And I live at the house that Susan was talking, we're right, right across the street. I'm nearest house to you. So, you know, I kind of apologize that, you know, I didn't get to send the information until late last week and beginning of this week. So, I got a couple of questions. Okay, so my, my biggest concern is vermin, sash, rodents, okay, rats. Down at our, uh, down, down at the alpaca farms, we've got rats, but they don't make it to my house. Is there any kind of?
Now, address the.
Guys looking into rats?
Sir, address your, address your concern up here. That actually is an airport issue. John, uh.
Are there any rats? We, we, we got skunks there. We got possums there. We got coyotes. Is there, is there any way to address that?
Um, certainly if it's a problem.
Okay, no, I'm just, I just.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know of rats being a problem at the airport, but.
Well, no, but when, when you have dogs, my, you know, at, uh, my father's house in Wyandotte, he lives four or five streets off Fort Street. He gets rats. They got two dogs and they get rats. I mean, I just like to see something being addressed. Okay, so, you know, I, I appreciate the, the presentation. I appreciate them, uh, taking into consideration putting dogs in the south. Okay, so yeah, I just, uh, is there going to be a way to address the rat problem or something? Or how do we do that?
I would.
There is a rat problem. I'm not saying there's going to be. Um, it looks like he's using cleaner, but I just want to, I have questions on that.
Yeah, and I would just answer that as any kind of wildlife problem we have at the airport, whether it be deer, coyote, um, you know, we address it right away. So, um, I don't know of any rat problems that we have at the airport. I've not heard of any, no, no, um, tenants complained about having rats.
Yeah, most of the rats I've seen when I walk up and down a bike path are down at the alpaca farm. That's far enough away. I don't really see them at my house too often. So.
But I, I think that if it becomes an issue and, you know, these two right there would be right on it quickly and.
Okay, no, I just, that's, that's one of the questions I had. I, I just got some of the information today, so I haven't been able to go read through everything.
I would say, you know, with any of those sorts of issues, you know, contact the animal control officer, Julie Cordis at the township, and she will, she will coordinate with whomever.
Right.
Needs to be coordinated with in order to address your concern.
Okay. Um, the capacity, how, how many dogs are they going to have on a daily basis?
Okay. Uh, yes, can you answer that for us, please?
So we're, we're going to actually start a little slower. We're going to ten to twenty dogs initially, um, but we're, we're, we're going to build to forty? Forty? Yeah, forty possibly, at the most. Yep.
Okay, just kind of.
And that's going to be total between daycare and, and boarding. So it's not going to be forty daycare and forty boarding, it'll be forty total.
Okay, how, how many employees are you going to have there?
Um, so including.
Just come on up, just come on, stay up here until we, till we get up.
No, I, I mean, yeah, it's just, it's just basically.
Yeah, so there's the, the, at, at any given shift, there's going to be probably three employees.
Okay.
So, um, it's not a twenty-four hour operation, but it, it is, it is a full, you know, six-thirty to, to almost eight o'clock at night. And, and so there's going to be two shifts and we're looking at, um, three to four per shift. And when we're fully, when we're fully up and running.
Okay, yeah, that was part of my concern. Okay, and during the unsupervised times, how do we contact you?
Um.
I mean, if, if there's something happens, you know, granted, I'm right across the street.
No, no, that's, you know, actually it would probably be a great idea if we, we get to know each other and we, we, uh, we exchange phone numbers and, you know, obviously if we've got a noise problem or there's something going on over there, you know, we'll run over there and take care of it. We live a mile in.
Yeah, bullshit. I know the area there. I got some friends in there.
So we, we are, we are two, two minutes away. So, yep. Well, in, what's not in the presentation, which wasn't required, was, um, there's going to be multiple cameras inside and outside the facility. So, so we'll be able to monitor it and, and microphone's inside. So we'll know if there's, you know, we've got some issues going on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then the road going in there is pretty tore up. Is there any future plans on correcting that?
Say that again, please.
The road going into, was this coming off Grow Road, going through the, uh, Shearwell, you know, to go around the, yeah, the, the road going in there is pretty full of potholes.
Yeah, that's more, that's more an air, that's not their issue.
Oh, no, no. I just wondered, I'm asking you if there was anything with that.
John, what about your roads?
Haven't had that one asked for me today.
I just thought if we're going to fix the damn roads, we might as well get on a list, huh?
Let's just say that, uh, I, I think now if, if this special land use goes through and this project goes through, the, the airport would have a, more pressure to fix that road than we have in the past, right?
Okay, yeah, because, because when Campo's trucks go through.
I think that we all can agree that, you know, the road, especially, you know, in, on the west side of Shearwell, which, you know, will be used by, um, Campo. Um, will get more traffic, right? I mean, that, uh, so, uh, yeah, we, we are addressing those types of things at the Commerce Park.
Okay, yeah, because Campo's trucks go through there and it just makes terrible noise.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and, um, is there any typical noise I should expect? I mean, granted, I appreciate all the work you're doing. You're putting the, the noise fence. It's going to be indoors.
I really don't anticipate it being any louder than your, you know, and, and your neighbor having a couple of dogs.
Okay.
You know, so it, it's, it's, it's a pretty good distance away. You know, you got over four hundred feet away. Um, um, obviously if, if, if something's going on there that's, that's out of the ordinary, um, uh, you know, we'd be, we'd be down there, you know, attending to it. Yep.
Okay, yeah, because I.
As I explained in those groups of dogs, they're not so, all the dogs aren't, aren't going to be out at the same time.
Yeah, there was something about, how often are they going to be out? Do, all day or just?
They're going to be rotating, um, and then.
Why don't you come on up and that way you can speak into the microphone. Just stay up there. It's fine. This is a good discussion.
So they're going to be rotated out, those three groups of dogs. Um, typically, obviously in the winter, they're going to be out there, not as long as they are in the summer, but they pretty much will rotate every half hour, we'll say, every twenty minutes they will rotate out. So that's. So that's what we're planning on working with. So just rest assured that all the dogs, even if we have, we don't want to back it up into a full capacity, but even if we're at full capacity, all the dogs will not be out at the same time.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just kind of curious. And then there's going to be like the noise shielding on the fences on the outside?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say this, and Julie Cordis and Sue are kind of like cut from the same cloth when it comes to animals and expectations of animals. And so my wife and I live as close as you can possibly live to the animal shelter at the farm. And when we first moved there, we had, oh my goodness, you know, we're going to have these barking dogs, you know, they're going to be out and this and that. And it's no issue, no concern whatsoever. And the reason is, is because Julie won't put up with it. She manages it so that the dogs are not being intrusive to the environment around the farm.
Okay.
And I can tell you that I've known Sue long enough and listened to her philosophy on these types of things, and they're not going to put up with it either. I would be surprised, like Paul said, you know, I have neighbors that let their dog out and just keep barking and barking and just let them go, right? And that's more invasive to us than anything that's ever happened in five years that we lived there at the animal shelter.
Okay, yeah, I had some concerns. And I submitted a list of concerns or questions and stuff like that with the health. That was before Paul answered a lot of questions. I appreciate it, thank you.
No, thank you. And I just want to add one thing, because I think it's counterintuitive. We're running a business so people want to come and bring their dogs. So they don't want to bring their dogs to a place that has waste all over the place, and it smells, and it's loud, and it's noisy, and it's unkept. So you have to imagine, this is not just like a kennel out in the woods. We're running a business that we want people to, you know, come to. And so that's going to bode well, I think, for the residents nearby too.
Okay, no, no, there is another question on the waste. Okay, you're going to be putting into a curb bin, it says? Okay, now where are you going to, is it going to go out on Grow Road? So the regular
You know, that's a good question. I don't know where Priority is going to pick that up, I don't think. I think they'll probably come into the facility and pick it up in front of her. I hope so, because I don't want to wheel it all the way out to Grow Road myself, so.
Yeah, because one of the things, because Island Athletics puts their garbage out the night before. We get the raccoons go through there and tears it apart, and if it's a windy day, all goes on my yard. I pick up more garbage from them. So I could, you know, make a request, yeah, just if we could just maintain that, please?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Again, no one wants to come to a dirty facility.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate you cleaning up daily. That was one of my questions, it said, you know, waste we picked up on a regular basis. And what's a regular basis? So you said, yeah.
Almost immediate, it has to be done almost immediately.
Okay. Okay, no, I think that answers a lot of my questions. I apologize, I looked over the stuff and I just had a couple of questions, and Paul answered a lot.
Absolutely do not apologize, very good questions, and we appreciate your input.
Yeah, it's just my biggest concern would be rodents and rats and stuff. It just, you know, I got grandkids and I'm just kind of leery about that. So, I mean, if something happens, yeah, we'll, to get ahold of Julie then, or something?
Yeah, Julie Cordis.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I think that when it comes to really anything
Yeah, I'm not expecting there to be problems. I'm just saying that if something should arise, it just
But I want you to know that there is no wrong person to go to.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's any issue, and Paul was sincere, like, we got to get to know each other, right? Because he'll lose sleep if he thinks you're not happy with something, right? And, you know, you have the airport, you have Julie, you have, you know, the township office. Literally anybody that you call is not the wrong person, and it'll get to a resolution pretty quick.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Because we at the airport, we strive very hard to be a good neighbor. And I think, you know, outside of what you just said about Island Athletics garbage, which I'm going to address tonight after this meeting
You mentioned it to them, just, you know, what I do is I got one of the bigger bins, and I drilled a couple of little holes, I put a bungee cord on there.
Yeah.
Right, and that's the garbage men come over, they take the bungee cord off and they dump my garbage.
So everybody's here to try to make it pleasant for everybody. And one last, I guess, comment that's important for Paul and Sue. You know, Sue's a police officer on the island, and Paul's very active. They are firmly planted in Grozeal. They are citizens of Grozeal to the fullest, right? And they care deeply about it, so we all had those questions. See, all the questions that you have, we asked, you know, two, three months ago, right? Because a wrong answer wouldn't have got us this far, right? Any kind of, any kind of trip-up of the process of how they would run would question the Commerce Park of even putting together a lease form. Because we don't want you mad at the airport, you know?
Sure, no, that's the reason I'm here. I just, these were the things I had concerns about, and during their presentation, they answered a lot of my questions. And it's, I just, I just, that was the only thing. We have rodents, and, you know, because we have rodents down at the alpaca farm. If we could get them, I don't see them all the time, but you do see them every now and then. So, okay.
Yeah, okay.
All right, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan, thank you.
We appreciate your comments. Are there any other citizens who would like to comment on this application? Seeing no hands, I would entertain a motion from the Planning Commission to close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
No moves.
A motion from Eric, support?
Support.
Support from Brian. Call a question, I'll signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. We're now back for discussion. I'll go around the table one more time, then I will ask for motions. Any further comments or questions that you'd like to get addressed? We'll start with Eric.
No.
Brian?
One question I have, and it might be more towards the airport commission, but related to the road. The road is pretty wide in that area, and given its proximity to the bike path and that people might be walking their dogs to the destination, I don't know if there's any consideration about, you know, creating some space for people walking their dogs to the site.
Mr. Rathell, that's a new one, we did not discuss that.
Brian, say anything? What was that, Brian?
I was asking about just a connection for people walking from the bike path to the
Well, Brian, you and I have a very good history of working together on all non-motorized movement on the island, right? So I have no problem getting with you, and we need to, in all seriousness, I mean, we need to address those drives, right? I mean, that's some way we need to do that. And the time to talk about pedestrian traffic is then, right?
Yep.
So, yeah, let's, you know, let's pick up that conversation and see what and when we're going to do. We're going into our new fiscal year, as you know, and we have some projects that we want to accomplish, so.
Thank you, no further questions.
Okay, Dan?
No questions for me?
Okay.
No further questions, I just wanted to thank Mr. Kaminski for feeling comfortable raising his concerns and accepting the, you know, the responses that I think were pretty good. So I just wanted to thank you for doing that.
John, final thoughts?
No questions.
Angela?
None for me.
Okay, and I'll just say that, you know, having participated with you folks one time, you know, in our pre-application meeting with a number of other folks, I must say I am very, very pleased with the results that you have presented here. The presentation, the quality, the way you've thought through the issues, the way you addressed the questions that were put to you, some of which were not easy. But you had to investigate, and you did what you needed to do in order to have what I think is going to be a very successful project and a very successful business. So, thank you for that. Entertainer motion, please, regarding the special land use.
I move approval of granting special land use to Island Paradise. Paul Dice, Paul Dice, Paul Dice.
Paul Dice, yeah, I made that mistake too.
I'm putting out support.
We have a motion from John, we have support from Brian. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Now, we'll now move to the site plan. I'll entertain a motion regarding the site plan.
Move approval to move forward to the Township Board for them to approve the site plan as submitted.
That actually was the special land use, but that's okay. You're actually approving the site plan, we're approving the site plan.
The site plan, yes, I'm sorry, that's what I meant to say, site plan. I just wanted to do the special land use like twice, I wanted to hit that thing, I wanted to hit it.
All right, okay, we have a motion again from John, is there support?
Support.
Support again from Brian, call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Ross, one of the things that needs to happen is that this likely is going to hit the agenda next Monday at the Township Board. Not for certain, but probably is. You're going to need to get with Brian, he'll be in the office tomorrow. There's going to have to be a preparation of a findings of fact for this, so that the board has the information that supports the Planning Commission decision. So will you make that happen, please? Okay. Thank you very much, folks. We'll move to the next item now. Okay, next item is the lot split. Reconfiguration along South Point Road. The applicants are Lori and Edward Vogel at 27708 South Point. The location legally is Lot 239 in the north, 190 feet of Lot 240 of Supervisor's Grosso Platt number 21. The common description is this is on the west side of South Point, opposite the intersection with Johnson Road, and it's about 500 feet south of Grow Road. The proposal, well, the zoning, first of all, is R1A single-family residential. The proposal is that the applicant owns two pieces of property with two residences. The residents are split. The resident to the south has about 80 feet of frontage after this is done, and the resident north will have 190 feet. It's being split, it's easiest to show you. I think this is the one I'm supposed to show. Ah, there we go. Okay, you're looking here at South Point Road. North is to the top of the screen, have a residence to the north side, have a residence to the south side. What's happening here is that the property in this red area here currently is attached to the south property. This lot split reconfiguration transfers that property to the north. And what you end up with in the end are two lots, which are in full compliance with R1A standards. The lot to the south will have the proper 80-foot road frontage. The lot to the north will have 190 foot of frontage when the two are placed together. So that's what's happening here. So it's actually transferring about 100 feet from the south to the north. The resulting parcels, at the end of this, the south will be at about two acres, and the north will be at about I hope that's all clear. Sometimes a picture's worth a thousand words. Brian, when he went through this on his review, he showed the location, he talked about the dimensions, he talked about lot areas, and the bottom line of all of it was that it is in compliance with the standards as defined in Article 3, single-family residential. So on that one, I'll stop, and let's ask if the Vogels would like to come up and have a talk with us.
Hi, I'm Lori Vogel.
Hello, my name is Ed.
Welcome to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. So I just, you know, when this home went for sale, we live next door, it needs a lot of work. Our understanding is we're the first people outside of the Swan and Asher family that have owned the home. So we, you know, we heard a lot of people were looking at tearing the home down, and, you know, we're really proud residents of Grozeal, and so we didn't want that to happen. So we took this on, and it's been quite a project, but it will be beautiful, and it will represent our community really well when it's done. And just appreciate everyone reviewing it, if you have any questions.
Let's run through the table here and see if anybody has any questions before I go to the audience. Angela?
You start with me? No, I'm quite familiar with the project, live in the area, and been watching it from afar, and I think it's, I think it makes sense. I think it's pretty cut and dry, and I think, yeah, it all makes sense to me, I have no questions at this time.
Okay, John?
I think the project is a great one, and I have no issues at all moving forward, split in this.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, I was in that house before I walked, so I appreciate you taking it on, it's fantastic, thank you.
Dan?
I think the project will result in two parcels that meet all the zoning requirements, so I don't see any issues with this project.
Brian?
If it meets the requirements, you know, I echo what Dan is saying, but I just have one question. It seems like we're going, swapping 100 feet from one brother, and so it's like it might be like an issue, like whatever issue might have been the reason for decreasing one, you know, increasing one side might be like a problem with the other. So I just didn't know if there's any backstory on, you know, why the lot is going to be reconfigured.
Our intentions is to sell the home once we remodel it. So we just wanted to keep the extra property as a part of our property, you know. We're investing a lot of money in this remodel, it's not something, we're not going to be making a lot of money on this, so at least maybe a little bit of extra land will be nice.
Okay, great, thank you, no further questions.
Eric?
Nothing to add.
Okay, any comments from the audience? No hands, I'll bring it back to the table, entertain a motion, please, regarding the lot split reconfiguration of the South Point property.
Still moved?
Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the lot split as submitted.
I'll support.
I have a motion to approve the lot split as submitted. Eric, support from Angela. Further discussion? Call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Very good, this will now go to the Township Board, who has the final approval. I don't know what their agenda looks like or whether this might be on it. You'll have to check back with the Community Development on that.
How regularly do they meet?
They meet every two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to the next item, which is a lot split. West Shore Golf and Country Club. The applicant is Sam Sob, 19855 West Outer Drive, Suite 207, that's in West Dearborn. Mr. Sob is working in conjunction with Safeway Acquisitions Incorporated. Safeway is a potential property buyer of this property if it is split. Both of these parties have been authorized as representatives of, in order to present this application to the Planning Commission, that's in our records and is part of it. Location legally is Lot 284 of Supervisor's Grosso Platt number 31. The common description is Grosso Golf and Country Club, 22843 West River Road. The proposal is to split off a nine-acre portion of 118-acre West Shore property for future residential use. The remaining 109 acres remains as the golf course. Let's see if I can show a picture here. Okay. This is looking at the north side of West Shore, and you can see Island Drive here in the back, running to the west. And then running to the south is, oh, I forget the name of that street. That's what it is, Belmoreau, okay? And Belmoreau runs up to a point here, which is a dead end, okay? The area that is being talked about to be transferred to it, or split, encompasses basically all of this. Nine acres of this area right in here. You see, it avoids the golf course holes, so as not to impact the quality of the course. so as not to impact the quality of the course. The, the access to this, the only access to this is at the Belmore dead end. As is obvious, the property is generally wooded. You see these structures right here. This, this is maintenance facilities for the golf course. Looking a little closer at that, if you go to the dead end of Belmore, and you look to the south, it turns into a driveway, and here is the beginning of the of the maintenance facilities. Getting a little closer, it's, it's actually two buildings. And an area around it which is, which is used to store equipment and supplies like soil and sand and those sorts of things that a golf course requires. So that, that is what is there currently. The zoning for this is R1D, single-family residential. And since this constitutes an area for new buildable lots, the R1E zoning overlay actually applies. So we're, we're talking about dimensions now around the R1E standard. The applicable ordinances are two letters from a CE range engineer that, that talked about this. The CE range, I, I spoke with the engineer this afternoon. He was specifically asked to review the material, the survey information provided by the applicant for the purposes of a lot split here for us tonight. He did that. He wrote a letter that was documented on, from December 15th, when saying specifically that he was not approving the appro, the proposed certification of the survey that was submitted by the applicant. And there were two main areas of concern. First, the survey itself. The survey itself was conceptual. And he listed eight areas on that survey which, which were not consistent with a, with a completed survey. The second is that there were, there were points, he listed points of concern. These were not so much directly related to, to the survey proper, but were related to factors that should be considered, for example, traffic. Okay, which, which is an engineering concern, but it's not one that we have in terms of, of a lot split. So I did not know what a conceptual survey was. So when I spoke with the CE range engineer this afternoon, he gave me an education. What this, what this is, is this is, this is a paper survey. There were no field, there was no field work actually done. It's, it's considered an estimate. And one of the, one of the points that was, that was highlighted in the, in the CE range letter was, was accuracy. He pointed out that so-called line of sight was 18 feet. And I said, what does that mean? What it means is, is that there's an engineering standard for surveyors. He says that a survey should be accurate to, at, at worst, 1 in 5,000. So one foot off and 5,000 feet. Okay, this was, just in looking at the numbers that were on the paper, it was 18 feet off. So that, that didn't make a lot of sense. I, I then went on and, and talked to him about the second letter he wrote dated February 8th. And that was a call that the applicant had with, the engineer had with the, the person who submitted the survey. And as a result, the CE range engineer said that six of the first eight survey items that were on that, on that sheet, that he listed as problems were okay. Okay, and, and that the two remaining would be dealt with, the submittal, when the submittal was actually, a later submittal was actually made. If the Planning Commission grants the, the lot split. So I asked him, okay, what prompted, what, what changed between December the 15th and February the 8th? And he said, he, he said that the, the engineer, the applicant's survey or whatever, had told him that this, that this was meant to be a conceptual review tonight. That as such, it was, the, the information that was presented was not meant to be an, a, a survey quality piece of documentation, like what we would expect to normally see. So much so, in fact, that when you look at the property descriptions that are on there, the two are identical. There is no part A and part B. They're both part A. Okay, they're identical. So, you know, this, this, this then prompted me to think, well, are we really, are we really evaluating this for a lot split tonight, or is this a conceptual review that, that simply is a, a chance for the, the applicant to hear what we think about a lot split? But, but certainly, it, it was, it was a surprise to me. I, I didn't, I didn't know any of this prior to this going on the agenda. Let's take a look at, at some of Brian's information. He goes through the location and the aerial photo, and the background and the process, which I've already covered. And he goes through submittal requirements, and he lists off those things which are in our ordinance, which we, which we, we have when we review lot splits. A deed history, a location map, a topographic survey. It is interesting. I, he, the topographic survey was not submitted with this particular application, but in a previous application, it was submitted. I found it in the old records, so that in fact is there. Buildings and structures on the lot and within 100 feet. And, and then he makes specific reference to the maintenance and storage building. You know, we, we, we see what's, what's in the property, and we see what's around it. That's not there. A location of wetlands, drainage ways, et cetera, if there are any. And looking at the Township High Level Wetlands map, there aren't any there, but that is something that, again, that needs to be confirmed. And documentation from Wayne County regarding site distance. This is, he, in, in each of these categories, he, he makes a comment about whether it is critical to us in our review or not critical to our review. And so you can see what those things are in here. And then, of course, he references the concerns of the Township engineer. So there's a lot in the way of submittal requirements as defined in, in Article 19 that, that obviously aren't there. As far as the comments themselves, the lot area, you know, it is, it is definitely buildable. There's plenty of area there, nine acres for, for R1E type development, which is, which is the current zoning. Again, sufficient area for, for building envelopes, however many remains to be seen, we don't know. Because it had, it's not part of the layout of what's been submitted. Buildable area. You know, again, assuming that there aren't any wetlands or drainage ways there. You know, that is not a factor, and he points that out. Minimum frontage. The minimum street frontage is 60 foot, and this is coming off of Belmore, so there's a 60-foot right, 66-foot right-of-way there, which would then be extended potentially into the property. And he points out that Parcel A, which is the main 118 acres, is, is still part of the golf course. It's interesting to note that the, the property for Parcel A does not include the, the lots that are actually on the, on West River Road that have the clubhouse and the parking lot. Those are not part of Parcel A. Those are, those are separate entities altogether. Lot to width ratios. You know, that's, and shapes of parcels. Again, because this is such a large tract, you know, it isn't particularly rectangular like, like what we're used to seeing, but that's, that's allowed when the property is as large as it is. There weren't any easements that were shown on any of the information. Elimination or reduction of non-conforming situations. The, he points out the, the existing golf course maintenance and storage building. On or near the very new, very near the proposed parcel B will be removed. That was our understanding from, from prior discussions with the applicant in pre-application conferences and in, in the one or two times they were up here in pre-application conferences over, since 2018, that that was going to be removed. And Brian is pointing out that that's something that we, we need to make sure is included in, in, in any approval condition. So those were the main elements of what was in the information from the Township engineer and from Brian Borden. Before we get to the applicant, are there any questions on this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so a couple of questions. I, I know we've seen this in a couple of different incarnations in the past with the marina, without a marina, with the, you know, with the maintenance shed moved and not. What's the latest status of, you know, what, what did we last approve or not approve? And I can't, I'm, I'm dragging my memory banks, and I was here for all of the meetings.
Yeah, I know. It's, this project goes back to 2018, so it's, it's, it's difficult to keep track. But the fact is, the Planning Commission has approved absolutely nothing on this project. And it was agreed when the applicant came forward this last time in 2022, that the first step in the process is they needed to submit a request for a lot split. Okay, that does not include anything that's on it. Strictly a lot split. Blank piece of paper. This area goes to Parcel B. The other area stays Parcel A. Okay, that's what, that's what we're reviewing tonight. We're not evaluating rezoning. We're not evaluating number of units, nothing on, on dimension at all. Straightforward lot split. Does that answer your question, I hope?
Yeah, it, it does. It's just confusing, right? Because we've seen this already with a, with a complete development in here with, you know, concerns about single-point access, everything else.
I, I do not know what the applicant is going to present, and we'll, maybe there's a presentation. I don't know. We'll find out here shortly. Additional questions?
Mr. Chair, so I think you just clarify, clarified something for me. We're only talking about a lot split, but there's a whole bunch of reviews, special land use, zoning issues that will follow this based upon what the applicant wants to do with the new lot.
It could be, the answer to the question is yes. It could be as simple as if the applicant chooses to remain with a single-family residential zoning district, then, then that drives a very simple, straightforward process. Okay, along the way comes a relocation of, of the maintenance building, which is, which is a special land use. If it gets complicated and, and it becomes condominiums, okay, then rezoning is involved and, and other things come into play.
So, so, I'm sorry. So when the Township Board eventually gets this, they will have all of that information and the lot split together. They won't, they won't deal with it separate like we are right now. They'll have a, a complete package.
I don't, I can't say that, because the applicant is supposed to put the roads and, and the, and everything in before the Township Board ever sees it, as far as the lot split is concerned.
Let's say that we approve the lot split, and we do that, but the lot split won't happen until the Township Board approves a lot split.
Officially, legally, it is not authorized until the Township Board approves it. But functionally, if the Planning Commission says yes, and the applicant goes out and spends a million dollars to put in roads and sewers...
Okay, and then what happens when they now present their ideas of the housing development that they want, all the infrastructure, oh yeah, we want to move the maintenance shed, so we gotta put it over here into the, into the southeast corner of the golf course, and we need a special land use, and none of that gets approved?
That's... Exactly. I mean, I, I, I can't, I... It's, it's a very, it's a very complicated application. At least it has been a very complicated application. And there's no guarantee when you move from one step to the next, not just at the Planning Commission, but the Zoning Board of Appeals has to, has to weigh in on some of this.
Well, I think, yeah, I think everybody in the township will be involved with this because of all the ordinance changes or the, the lot split, the, the special land use, the zoning issues that are involved with this.
The applicant tonight specifically asked us to review and approve a lot split. He did not ask for a conceptual review. It was submitted to, to Brian Borden in the Township as a lot split application. And we vote yes, we vote no, or we table.
So if we vote yes, is the lot legally split?
From a functional standpoint, yes, because the applicant is going to, is then going to be authorized to move ahead with roads, utilities.
And knowing that there's a possibility that the project that they ultimately want to do will not happen?
Well, I would hope in the time span, if, if, if the applicant gets approval tonight on the lot split, I would expect that the next step in this, they will go to ZBA, and they, we will go find out promptly if, if they can extend the road beyond the limits of the ordinance. If, if that's allowed by ZBA, then they would come back and either, either propose a, a single-family residential or a condominium project. If they propose a condominium project, we will process that as a rezoning and a site plan. If he comes back as a, as a single-family residential, it's simply a site plan.
So since we're looking at this as a single-family residential, is it safe for us to view it as we are approving a lot split with that process of development in mind?
That's all we've got. It's R1E.
Right.
Single-family residential. Nothing else has changed.
But we look and say, is it, do we think that a lot split is a, is a good decision to make here based upon an R1E development?
That's correct. That's, that is where we stand. Where we stand here right now, yes.
Okay.
Now, that probably doesn't satisfy the applicant. Okay, but, but, you know, the, the difficulty of this, with this whole thing was, you know, we went round and round with, with staff and the applicant trying to understand the varying changes in the, in the, in the, in what they were proposing, and how best to process it through the Township. And this is what we came up with.
Is there a public meeting that we need to have before we do this for the residents around there to have, like, input, or?
Well, obviously, anybody could have input now, but if it's rezoned, absolutely.
This proposal, I really feel that we should be voting on what we have before us, and what we have before us is nothing about a multifamily development or having multiple houses in there. I think, in my, in my opinion, I think this should be looked at as if they want to proceed with, with the application, application that we have, that this is to put, does it mean the requirements to be split off to potentially have one house on it?
Exactly. That's, that is the point that I'm making.
My first question is, does it have enough frontage to meet the requirements, the frontage requirements? Now, yeah, if you add a road on here, and that would create more frontage, but there's no proposal to add a road on there. You know, so it, it's potentially can meet the requirements for one, one house because, because of the amount of frontage it has. Without an additional road, there's no additional frontage.
That's a good point.
That's a great point.
Angela, you had, you had a comment? I'm, I saw your hand.
Well, and I guess this, I'm trying to process and noodle on all of this, because, you know, when I think about getting an approval to split a lot, then asking the applicant to, or understanding that the applicant's going to build roads and utilities, there's a huge difference between building a road and utilities for one residential space as opposed to many. So are we setting not just the applicant up for disaster, but ourselves as well? Because we're, I, I, why is it a requirement within a year for them to build out roads and utilities if we're not even sure what they're looking to build? Is it possible to approve the lot split only, and then, and then, I mean, it seems to me the next step in the process would be to, then to understand what's going to go there before we ask them to put in roads and utilities?
Well, yes, that, that is the, that is the, that is the logic. You're, you're hitting on the logic, okay? The first step is the lot split. Clearly, regardless of what's, it says in the ordinance, they're not going to go out tomorrow and start putting a shovel in the ground to, to, to put a road in. Okay, what they're gonna do is come back and say, now that this is split,
Okay.
we want to do X. Okay, and whatever that X is, we look at the ordinance and figure out how it is we process it.
Okay.
And, and... And, and certainly, you know, no, no savvy business person would ever put a shovel in the ground until he had, had the approval far enough down the road. Now, that may take six months. Okay? In which case then, uh, you know, he would, he would apply for an extension.
Okay. Okay.
That's the way I would, uh, project it to go.
Okay.
Chairman, uh, just one quick thing here. Ba, you know, based on Brian Borden's review here, um, that their minimum frontage is 60 feet. This property has 60 foot, 66 foot right of way. So, they can build one house on this property. They, they can build no more than one house currently on this property. We can, we can approve the proposal that's before us and approve that, that would allow them to do one house. To do anything more than one house, they would need further approvals.
Agreed.
Mr. Chair, I'd like, I mean, we need to, I think, move on with this. I think we all understand it. My position, I'll just say right now, is that, um, I'm not gonna stand in the way of a parcel of land that, um, somebody can develop with our current building ordinances. They can build, if we split this, and the country club is willing to sell it, and somebody's willing to buy it, and whatever the regulations are, the zoning, uh, issues, whatever it is, people are willing to buy that and develop it, it's not up to me to decide if that's good business or not. Um, we're not having special land use here, we're not given any special consideration. It's just somebody owns the land, they're asking for it to split off, and somebody looks like they may be willing to buy it for future development. And what that is, none of my concern right now, so I have no problem doing a, a lot split here, if that's what, if that's what they want.
Yeah, the fundamental question is, does it meet the requirements for a lot split? Yes or no?
I think it does.
Period.
My, my, my personal feeling.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Angela brought it up, but whose requirement is it that the roads and sewer lines get put in within one year? Is that part of the purchase agreement, or is that part of our zoning ordinance?
That's part of our zoning ordinance. That's actually in the zoning ordinance.
Sorry, that was within one year of the what?
So, we approve a lot split?
Lot split.
And then there's, there's one year, how come we haven't seen this in any of the other lot splits?
Because we never had one required to development like this. Everything up like this single family, there's no, like we, we just had, it's irrelevant. I'll read it to you. I was surprised when I saw it too, I didn't know it was there. Um, let's see, 19....
It says 19.21D, but it was unclear if that was the previous paragraph or this paragraph.
Uh, utilities and road improvements. Okay, the review by township departments is step one, review by the planning commission, that's step two, and then three is utilities and road improvements. Following a recommendation by the planning commission, the applicant shall be responsible for installing all required utilities and road improvements necessary to preserve the proposed lots. The township board shall not take final action on the land division until all required utility and road improvements have been made. Required utility and road improvements shall be installed within one year of the planning commission recommendation to township board, provided that the planning commission may grant up to one-year extension upon written request by the applicant.
The first part of that, though, said to preserve anything, right? So, if there's nothing being preserved other than wooded area, we're not preserving anything at this point in time. To me, that lot split, that would read that, you know, if there's an existing home that needs to be, you know, connected to with roadway and sewerway, that would be applicable, unless I'm misreading that.
Well...
Or mishearing it in this case.
This, uh, this was what, uh, you've reached the limits of, of, of my knowledge on this. This was, this was Brian's, uh, Brian Borden's, uh, feedback in his letter to us, and I'm simply quoting it. Uh, if there are other ways to interpret it, I don't see it. But as far as tonight is concerned, in the end, that's not relevant. What's relevant is specifically, does the lot, approved lot split meet the requirements of the, of, of the zoning ordinance? And what happens after that, you know, can be talked about later.
I may have missed, but why, why are we indicating one, um, R1E in lieu of the doc, document from Brian Borden has R1D on it?
R1D is the underlying zoning. We have a, um, in our single-family residential district, we have what's called an overlay district, for property that is undeveloped. Okay? Rather, uh, there is an overlay, an R1E overlay, which, which changes the standards of whatever that underlying zoning district is, increases lot area, increases dimensions, uh, and, and that is what applies in undeveloped property.
Okay.
Everybody totally, uh...
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's...
Jay, you haven't said anything. I'm waiting.
Well, I just, uh, I, I think the, the points that have been raised are correct. Um, you know, I, I, I think we're all a little bit troubled by this concept that, you know, by approving something that is very simple, it sets a timeline running that, um, may be unreasonable, given the complexity of everything we've talked about. So, but it, it is what it, you know, whatever those rules are, is what those rules are. Uh, and, you know, if Brian were here, we could all quiz him and say, are you sure? Um, because that, you know, that's what it says. Uh, I, you know, read through that before, and, uh, the, well, okay, I don't understand what that means, so obviously it doesn't mean what I think it does, and apparently it does. Uh, so, I, I think we're, you know, I think the 66, um, foot right of way is the answer to the question about whether there's frontage, um, to the lot. You know, if we think of it as a, you know, if somebody was, you know, this is just a very large, uh, lot that's being created, that somebody could build a house on. That's what we're being asked, and I think if that's all we're doing, then I don't, I don't see why we would, uh, say no.
Okay. All right, uh, it's a good we had this discussion. Uh, this, this discussion has been held frequently at, at the staff level, without, without any clear resolution, but all of us need to get on board as to what we're, what we're processing and how. So, if we've accomplished that tonight, and if nothing else happens tonight, we at least, uh, made headway there. Okay, so, I have, uh, completed, uh, the review of the information. We've had our discussion about the process and what we are doing and what we are not doing, so let's now hear from the applicant. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. Please introduce yourselves to the commission, welcome.
Uh, Mario Ferrante, broker, helped you sell real estate. I'll be the real estate that's handling, I'm the realtor that's handling the, uh, transaction for West Shore and the applicant. I am also wearing another hat, a couple hats tonight. I'll also be answering some questions. I sit on Trenton Planning, so I kinda understand the lingo that you guys go through every day. I'll also be wearing the hat as I'm also the West Shore Vice President, and with me is the applicant Sam Sob, and we also have Brian Cromer, who is the President of West Shore. If there's any questions on West Shore's behalf, rather than me wearing that hat, I'll have Brian answer those questions. And then I apologize our engineer, uh, which would make things life a lot easier tonight, uh, Hennessy Engineering, who is, uh, Mike Brock. He also is on vacation and could not get back due to, uh, traffic issues, uh, could not get back in time to, which would, actually would have been very helpful to have, uh, Mike and, uh, Brian Borden actually have this conversation tonight. So, I'll try to answer and fill in, just like John said, as best I can, uh, but, but I don't know how well I'm gonna do. So, we'll try it from there.
Somehow we'll figure out a way through it.
We'll figure out a way. So, I guess I'll start. So, a couple of things that, that are confusing. So, um, this has been a long process, and the, the intent all along to get to this point has been to simplify the project, and because there was so many unknowns and so many variables, and some are not correct that you guys discussed tonight, and I'll go over that, is that it, the, the actual project just became too complicated. So, in order to uncomplicate the process, we are not removing the shed. The shed was to be relocated to Ferry Road, and that, that created a whole different M-dot situation, it created a neighbor situation, it created a public hearing situation. The shed was to remain intact. Originally, we were selling 10 acres, uh, 10.5 acres. What we've done, as you can see from the proposal that was given to you, is we actually split off the property so that the, everything coming off of Baumwoll, uh, north would fall back in that property, it was about eight and a half acres. And the intention was to keep the shed at West Shore, and then as to do proper screening in Birmingham. So, one of the questions that I have is, we are within 100 feet, but I really don't understand how that's applicant to our application, and I saw Brian's notes, that there's some kind of 100 feet rule of removing our shed. Uh, the proposal that we made the last time, or iteration that we made of this project was to not remove the shed, and that way it was a much easier project. The second part of that was to, the second part of that was, because it's such a complicated project, and perhaps a special use may be brought under conditional rezoning, and because the developer's unsure of whether they'll get that, the developer's willing to weigh that risk and buy the property, because the current property of nine acres is such a beautiful piece of property, and it's so ripe for development, that, that even if you didn't put a condo development, there's plenty of room that fills, falls completely within the ordinance and complete within the building department to put a housing structures up there, that area. The other concern I have is that, up till tonight, I just learned something, which I, I, I defined the definition that John gave a little different, about putting the roadways and the infrastructure into a project prior to you actually getting approval for that project. We're here just to split off nine acres of West Shore and to sell it to a developer. If the developer wants to plant flowers there, that's his business. But I don't see how that's any different from our perspective than the last applicant that just came, that moved 100 feet of their property, and I, I don't understand how that's any different. We're here to sell nine acres to a future developer that has the choice, after he buys the property, as long as he fits everything with the ordinance, is to put up a proper housing project that fits the ordinance to a perfect T, or take a project that has been looked at for over four years and has been micromanaged to the point where it totally has brought a possible project that can be very beautiful to township of Grozeal. However, there's no provisions in the current ordinance that you guys have to bring that project, therefore it would have to be under, under conditional rezone. It's hard for the developer to make that purchase and pay and, and move forward without actually owning the property. And that's what we're here to do, is split the property, to sell it to them, so they can make that decision for themselves. They're aware of their risk.
Well, that makes perfect sense. That's, that's, that's a very logical way to, uh, handle it. It takes you, it takes you out of the picture, and, and it, uh, what, whatever the, uh, the future owner chooses to do, again, uh, it'll have to be consistent with the zoning ordinance.
Absolutely.
Plain and simple.
Yes.
Okay, so, again, we get back to the basics, you know, of evaluating this for a lot split. Would you please comment, why in the world did you submit a conceptual survey? And not a survey that shows, you know, the, all, all the key relevant information that we normally see?
Hey, John, I can't answer that, because I'm not the applicant. Uh, we believed, coming into this meeting, meeting tonight, that Hennessy Engineering and Rains, the engineer on behalf of Grozeal, had worked that out. There was numerous conversations of us coming here prior to, and I'm not just gonna say there was assurances made, but we thought that those bugs were worked out. I was not aware that it was consensual till I just walked in here this evening.
What the, uh, what the engineer told, what the Rains engineer told me was that there was a commitment made by whoever it was he was talking to, that, that, uh, drawing, a, a form, a formal field survey would be, would be forthcoming. And it never came. So, the intent might have been there, but maybe it was a timing issue or whatever.
Could have been. Uh, I wasn't aware till I walked in, and, and I do know the difference between a conceptual, we have the same thing in Trenton. So, I, I never saw the prints, I'm not on that side of the, of the field, so to speak. That's between the applicant as engineer. Uh, some of this stuff is very technical, and somehow it, sometimes it escapes the applicant's knowledge base, so to speak. Uh, but I never saw that. But, uh, the, there was conversation, I know, made between, uh, Hennessy Engineering and Rains Engineering, and I think the intention was, okay, let's just get to the lot split, and whatever conditions are made upon that lot split can be cleaned up on the next iteration. That's kind of how I took it. Uh, maybe that's not how it went down. I apologize for that.
There's no reason to apologize, it's just, you know, we deal with what we've got.
Right. That's where we're at.
So, that's the way it is. All right, um, is there anything you, you want to specifically add about this, uh, this, this lot split that would, uh, help us to, uh, be able to process it?
Well, the particular developer you're working with, Mr. Sob, is a, a man of, uh, integrity and wealth, and he wants to do something nice on the island, and I think where he's at with it, which he can, pretty flexible in what he can do there. He's looking to pick up the track of land, cause he has an interest of owning property on or near a golf course, on or near, uh, a waterway to, to Detroit.
Well, um, let me ask this question. You know, if the planning commission were to act on this tonight, uh, these seven or eight, or six bullet points that, that Brian, uh, that, uh, were identified as, as not being submitted, when would those be submitted?
Month, sorry. Next month? I'm making sure it will be, everything will be submitted by next month.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you?
I'll make sure everything, uh, will be submitted by next month. By the end of April, I would say.
By the end of next month?
Yes.
Okay, that would include a field survey and...
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, John, I...
All right, let, let me ask you this question. Given, given the fact that, that, that you know you need to do this, and we now know that this is simply and strictly a lot split...
Yes.
Period.
One hundred percent.
Okay. Uh, what are your thoughts about, rather than going through this, uh, and potentially reviewing something that, at least in my opinion, does not meet our requirements? Uh, tabling this for a month and resubmitting this and coming back next month, with all the information complete in a package that we can look at and, and move through? Given, given the fact this project has been going on for five years, I can't see that another month makes a difference.
John, I, I really don't have a problem with that, just with, just as long as there's two issues on there that, that will be problematic. The one about the, about providing infrastructure to a vacant piece of parcel and being attached to that as a condition of the lot split, that's problematic. The other one would be, we're not removing the shed at West Shore.
I'm sorry?
We are not removing the shed at West Shore. And part, part of the condition that, one of those bullet points is, and that was from the first iteration of our plan, so I see how that bled through, but we made it pretty clear that when we de-intensified the use, and then we had de-intensified the use of the property in order to accommodate all the different comments that were made by numerous people to try to make it a very pleasurable situation for Grozeal, that we were not going to move the shed. And therefore, instead of being a three-pronged project, it became a two-pronged project, and now we got it down to a one-pronged project.
Okay, I, I think this is what we need to do about that. First of all, we need to know exactly, you know, if, if, when you get this, this survey done, and you show the location, show the dimension. How far is it? Is it 100 feet? Is it 80 feet? Is it 100? What is it? Okay?
Right.
And what, and from what? Is it from the park, the building? Is it from the parking lot? What is it?
Absolutely.
Okay, get it down, uh, and what we need to do then is, is get with, get with Brian, and let's find out, okay, what ordinance standard is it that, that, that this applies to? Okay? I, I am not clear on what that is.
Okay.
All right? Now, from that point forward, uh, you know, if there is a, uh, well, I'm, I don't want to get over the end of my skis here, but, but if it is a dimensional variance, it could potentially go to zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, but let's find out what, exactly what the dimensions are, show where that road, you now, now think that, that property break is going to be, and, and then let's take a look.
Sounds good. Sounds fair.
And can we, and maybe we can look at all that next month? At the, well, at our next meeting, whenever you guys are ready?
Yep. Makes sense.
Commissioners, what do you think about that?
I, I wanna comment on that, and, and that makes all the sense in the world. I, I would probably lean in favor of just voting yea or nay on this thing tonight, and here's why. Because this thing has been going on since 2018, or has been so many conversations, uh, like, actually, if you remember, the marina was already approved once, it already went through the entire process of the township, and it went through the Army Corps, and it was improved, it was approved project to actually put a marina in, and it never happened. So, this has been talked about for many, many years. They're gonna take the shed, they're gonna put it here, they're gonna sell here, we're gonna have condos, there're gonna be 2,000 square feet, and there's gonna be this and that, and it was a very complicated three-tier program that you talked about. The reality of this project is, it is a very simple lot split for us. The reality of this project is, it is a very simple lot split for us. That's, that's the only question. It does not matter what Mr. Sob wants to do with this, with this lot. Right now, it is a lot that is conforming. He can put one house on it. There is a question of whether or not, okay, and I think Jay and Eric maybe alluded to this of, man, do you have to really put in the road, you know, now? I mean, you know, so there's that legitimate question, right, that may come back like, no, you don't have to. It's a lot split, right? So, the way that I'm looking at it from ground zero now, a whole new project, is that there is somebody that has a lot, they want to split it, they want to sell it, it's a conforming lot. Any other scenario that exists, we would approve it. There's no reason not to approve it. The work of what that developer wants to do to that lot, whether they want to build one house on it, or they want to build five houses on it, and they want to put roads on it, and they wanted, that, now we get into kind of, you know, where the rubber meets the road of what needs to be done at that point. But I don't want to think about what Mr. Sob wants to do to this. It's none of my business what he wants to do with it. He wants to buy a lot from a willing seller that is a conforming lot, and I don't want to stand in the way of that transaction.
You say it's a conforming lot, but according to Brian Borden, it is not a conforming lot if dimensionally that shed or the maintenance area is within 100 feet of the road. Now, that's, that's what...
The 100 feet of what road?
I, the road, where the property line would be. It's not the road, it's where the property line cuts across.
So, there, so there is, Brian, I thought there was a road, a potential road...
There is, but it's, again, it's not part of the plan.
Right.
I misstated it.
Okay.
What I stated was the edge of the property, where, if they're taking, and they're taking it at a 90-degree left, or a 90-degree west, east, I should say, what, what, in the 66-foot right-of-way, how does that conform with, with the dimensions?
Well, that's a difference, so if that shed is not, if the easement of the property line to the shed doesn't meet our requirements, then it's a non-conforming lot line.
That's correct.
So, we...
Which means, which means we need to know that first.
So, we don't know for sure if it is.
There's no information.
I will see in Brian's note, I mean, he does note here, given the nature of the request, these items do not impact our ability to review the request based on the review criteria. However, if we deem this necessary, then we may require any of those given bullet points. So, he's not necessarily requiring of us before we can review and make a decision on the lot split. He's recommending, as Brian does, and, you know, in a very thorough manner, hey, these are things that, you know, he wants to pull out based on previous conversations of this submittal. So, I, you know, I think what, what he's noting here, at least my interpretation when I reviewed it of the building and structures, was that if they are looking at what was previously proposed to, we need to ensure, before we deem that lot split, that it is within the 100 feet. But if, as the applicant's saying, they're not planning to move it, then it doesn't seem that that would be a problem.
I think that's where the confusion is coming in, is because we've had so many different concepts and discussions on what this project was going to be, and now you just simplified it down to a simple lot split of selling a...
Vacant parcel of land.
A vacant parcel of land.
...from a seller.
Okay, well, let's go around the table, and let's find out what, what commissioners think about this. Does this meet the requirements, and do you want to vote on it tonight? Do you want to not vote on it tonight? Do you want to table it? What do you want to do? Let's start with Eric.
Sure. Yeah, no, I mean, John, I agree with you. If this is a, if this is a simple lot split, then you're right. That's what we're looking at. The problem is, is that I have from an engineering standpoint, is that we've got, we don't know exactly where the lot split is. We're within 18 feet. 18 feet is a big area when you're talking about 100 foot buffer. It's up 20%, right? So, almost 20%. So, to me, I would have no problem with this, but I want to know exactly where we're dividing, and I think the applicant would want to know that, so that, you know, if they move the lot line by a foot, they can avoid moving the shed.
Fair point.
So, I'm, I would be in favor of tabling it for that reason only. But you're right, other than this, we would have no basis to deny this request.
Fair point.
Other than, right now, I don't know if I'm creating a non-conforming lot by doing this.
Brian?
Similar to Eric, and you're adding on, you know, I believe, John, you said it to begin with, that it was, you know, a conceptual survey, a paper survey or estimate. And so, based on that, I don't feel comfortable making a decision tonight. But, you know, again, if more information came forward, I'd be happy to recommend one way or the other.
Dan?
I believe we're evaluating this proposal for lot split to confirm that this property meets all the requirements to be an R1E property. And I think its property is probably very, very close to meet these requirements, but there's a few things that are just unclear. One is the maintenance shed, which has been, it's on my screen, has been brought up to us, you know, there's a certain amount of setbacks, certain setbacks has to be away from, from the property. And also, the front is really important. Other than a note, this, the survey does seem very schematic, other than a note pointing that, that the drive is 66-foot wide, it's, there's things that aren't very clear, and I think a more formal survey would help clear up these items. But again, I think it's very close. I don't see why we would reject something. If it, if it meets all the requirements to be R1E lot, then we wouldn't reject it.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think the, you know, I've kind of swung back and forth on this one a couple of times, and I think, when I think about the, the concern about the shed, and, you know, I read over a couple of times, you know, the 100 feet is mentioned a couple of times. I don't think it's entirely clear whether that is a, you know, deal breaker or not. You know, to your point, you don't intend to move the shed, I, you know, we, you know, we approve this, and turns out, you know, Brian intended that we understood that that, no, that that's, you know, that makes it non-conforming, you should not. You know, that may change things. And, and as was said, you know, maybe moving a line a little bit makes, makes all the difference, and this all works out. You know, I think if we had had, you know, either a, you know, full plan, or we had Brian here, you know, we might have been able to work some of these things out. I just feel uncomfortable, particularly, and if I also add in the concern about, you know, this road required within one year, that, you know, Brian could maybe explain to us and isn't here to do, you know, because I think, you know, that, you know, there are just enough questions here. I think if you can be back very quickly with something, you know, I think the consensus seems to be, you know, try to read to the room, that if this is all it is, and these couple of things are resolved, then, and really, as far as we're concerned, it's, it's really the shed is really the concern, and then what it triggers kind of becomes your problem. But I think you would probably want to know that before, you know, signing on to this thing, if that makes sense. Because I, I don't get the sense that anybody'd be excited on your end if, on your end, if you walked out of here and there's a clock that starts ticking tonight, that there's got to be roads in place in a year and completed. But, but that's not our problem, but I think, just with the uncertainties, I think it makes sense.
I think, just to save everybody a lot of time, I think it's a pretty easy request. And what we'll do, the lot, the, 90% of the lot was already surveyed, so, you know, three and a half sites was already surveyed with a legal description. That's a clear legal description with stakes that were put in the property. We'll just have, we'll just have the engineer redraw it to the correct lines that are not within 18 feet, but within 18 inches, within an inch it should be, not 18 feet. And then, really, what only has to be drawn is the, and they have to stake it out, is where the property starts on the other side of the road in determination from how far it is from the shed. So, I think it's a very reasonable request on planning from you guys' perspective. We can clean that up on our end, get it to you quickly, and we can move forward from there.
Let's, John, you haven't, excuse me, but do you have any more comments, John? Angela?
I guess my only comment, or I would say concern, is, you know, maybe just in the process of pulling these types of, you know, projects together and putting them on the agenda, you know, if we've known since the 23rd or whatever that we didn't have the actual survey, but they're finding out tonight, I find that a little disconcerting, you know, that we're bringing folks in who are ready to invest and do things within the community. Let's just clean up that two-way communication wherever we can. I don't know where that, you know, how, how we handle that process internally, I don't know. But, you know, I think it's, you know, it's a lot of time that they've spent here tonight, so I thank you for the time, and, you know, if, as soon as you can come back with the request. I would hate personally to approve something that would require you within a year to build a road and utilities for what, what God only knows.
We wouldn't do it.
Right. So, I mean, in that sense, but I would ask, I mean, I think, I've, I've seen it a couple of times, and I just think, you know, I hate that you've sat here all night, and then we're going to have you come back again in a month. So, that's all I have to say.
Well, in answer to your question, normally, the way this, this process works is, when the application comes in, okay, it's first reviewed by Brian and then discussed with me as to whether that applicant is ready or not ready to be on the agenda. If the applicant is not ready, then there are communications back to the applicant as to what the deficiencies are, so that discussions at the planning commission are productive, so that we don't get into a table situation. Now, in this particular case, that did not happen, okay? Brian and I did not specifically discuss this latest, latest review. It was, it was communicated to me as being, this is a, this is a standard lot split, no big deal, we see them all the time, okay? Well, then when we got in, got into the details, and we actually got the packages and looked at what's there, perhaps it was an oversight on Brian's part. Maybe I wasn't around when he wanted to communicate, whatever.
And oversights happen, that's totally, yeah.
But normally, we try to, we try to manage this, so we don't put the applicant through the pain of coming to the planning commission twice.
We've been here a few times, we're okay with it.
Well, all the bruises have healed, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Then, on that note, I would entertain a motion to table pending, pending completion of the items that are outlined on, on Brian's review, so that, and the engineers, so that we're all clear.
Thank you.
So moved.
We have a motion from Brian, is there support?
Support.
Support from Dan, call a question, all in favor, signal by a sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous. Thank you very much, folks. Just make sure, communicate back with Brian on this when you're, when you're ready. He'll do another review, and we'll get you processed as promptly as we reasonably can.
Can we get Brian's cell phone number?
I'm sorry?
Can we get Brian's cell phone number?
Oh. That, that I can't share.
Can I get your phone number, John?
Hey, I'm in the directory, you can call me anytime.
All right, I'll call you when you call Brian.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's the deal.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think it would be good to ask Brian to review 19.21D, because when I hear that, it's, it's, when you say restoration, then it would mean we'd have to get roads to people who are, you know, existentially impacted by this property split. In this case, I don't think there's anybody impacted. But just, it would be nice to know that, if there really is a clock or not a clock on this project.
That, that takes us, that, that question takes us straight to you, Ross, okay, for a discussion with Brian. When he gets back in, okay, you need to summarize for him, you know, the, the nature of the discussion, the nature of how the project has changed, okay, how the responsibilities for the project have changed, and how, how we, we need some interpret, you know, give him, give him the direction that, so he knows what to expect the next time the applicant comes in, all right? Don't know what the timing's going to be, but, but, you know, when it comes in, we expect everything, everything to be complete, okay? And then, we need to address this question about the 100 feet, and where does that come from? And then, we need to address the question of that particular section of 19.21, to clearly understand why Brian specified that in this particular instance, so that we understand it. And maybe he could give us a write-up, or simply, at the next meeting, have that as a separate agenda topic, you know, ahead of any lot split discussion, so we're all clear on what this is and why it is what it is.
I'll be sure to do that.
Maybe it's, maybe it doesn't belong there. That's possible, too. Maybe it's a leftover from who knows when. But in any case, we need to understand it, so that when this application comes in, again, if this meets the, if the lot split meets the ordinance requirements, we approve it. That's just the way it is, flat out, okay? So, we need to be clear on all the standards. Fair enough?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Okay.